Everybody, I've seen some of you earlier this week in other meetings. I will start with our COVID-19 testing. There were no positive cases this week. Good news. No positives. We currently have no positive cases, no staff and no residents that are positive. So I have reached out to our Orange County Public Health Department to ask the question about testing. What do we do moving forward? We've just completed two rounds of response testing and they've both been negative. So what does this mean for us? Do we continue testing? How does this look? So the guidance that I got per Orange County Public Health is that since we have completed our response testing and all the results are negative, we're no longer required to do weekly testing. So I thought you'd be happy to hear that. I know I was and sharing that with the team now for the first time because I told them yesterday, up until yesterday afternoon, I was still waiting to hear back from the county. So the exceptions are that for staff, if we have any unvaccinated staff, they have to continue to test weekly and they will go out for testing because it does have to be a PCR test and they will submit their results to us on a weekly basis. That is a regulation. For residents, and I'm sorry, let me back up with the staff. If any staff are experiencing symptoms, they also have to test. In regards to residents, if you're having any symptoms or you've been exposed to a known case, somebody you know was positive, if you've been exposed to somebody like that or you're having symptoms, then we can test you here. And that can be done with an antigen test per Orange County Public Health. We have plenty of antigen tests here. It's a home test. We can bring it to you in your apartment and we get results within 10 to 15 minutes. So there is no need to call a lab or go out for testing anymore. Any questions about that? Okay. All right. I'm going to...
Nadine?
Yes?
I see there's a rule now for a fourth shot. Are we considering it?
I think we're waiting to get more news. There's been a lot of discussion about it in the news. I don't have an answer for that yet, but we will wait and get guidance and once we do, we will do whatever the, you know, recommendation is. Okay. I'm going to invite Ethan up, our Director of Environmental Services. There's been discussion about hot water and water usage, so Ethan is going to talk about that.
Thank you, Nadine. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming out this morning. It's good to see everybody. I hope everybody had a good St. Patrick's Day in recovery. Before I get into the issues that we have up here, I just want to let everybody know, I appreciate everybody's help and support as I began working here. It's been really great to have everybody be so supportive, residents and staff. I really appreciate that. And I really enjoy being here. I'm kind of creating this as my second home now. So, you know, I want you guys to understand that I do treat this as my own home and I'll do my best to get the issues that we have at hand resolved for you. Okay? So getting into the issue that we have with hot water, the recirculation, it taking too long and, you know, wasting a lot of water. We have done a lot of investigation on the system. We do have an operating recirculation system intact. Everything is working. Unfortunately, the problem that we found out is that the system was not designed properly for the amount of, basically, it's called head pressure, which is basically the distance between the water heaters and wherever it's going. So that is one of the main issues that we've come across. These pumps that recirculate the water, they're, you know, specifically designed for the likes of pushing that they need to do. So we're working with the pump manufacturers to see if we can come up with a proper sized pump to get the hot water circulating back, well, not back, but the way it should be going. And then in turn, with getting that fixed, that moves us on down to our water conservation. So I'm very big on conserving renewable energy, all that new technology. I'm looking forward to trying to get some things implemented here on campus. But with the hot water recirculating, getting that fixed, that will definitely help us with conserving more water here on campus. Yeah, like I said, we're working diligently with the manufacturer, getting those pumps. And I just hope that you guys could be a little bit patient with me as I work through some of the issues, you know, that we've had for, or that you've had for several years. And I do plan on coming up with some resolutions for those. If anybody has any questions for me or you feel like emailing me, feel free to do so and I'd be happy to discuss them all with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ethan. Okay. All right. Next, I would like to invite our Chaplain Les. Oh, there he is in the back. Chaplain is going to give a little talk on resilience.
Thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes with you. You know, it's been quite a week here of all the village. We've experienced some loss and some changes. It is difficult for a closely knit community to lose members of that community. When we do, the pain seems to reverberate throughout and it is always difficult. I'm assuming that we can all think of losses we have experienced recently and we can easily identify the effect these losses have had on us, both individually and as a community. In addition to these losses that we have experienced within our community, we continue to have COVID-19 to deal with. I'm guessing that most of us have had our fill of COVID-19. We are tired of experiencing it, tired of the restrictions we have to practice because of it, tired of being fearful and tired of dealing with it. Now the restrictions that have come with attempting to battle the spread of this disease have caused some concerns in their own right. For this reason, I have been charged with giving a brief presentation on resilience. Now that most of the restrictions, most of the restrictions have been eased and most of the rest will undoubtedly be removed in the near future, it is time to talk about resilience. This presentation that I'm giving has been scripted and timed. I will spend the next 15 minutes talking about resilience, or in other words, ways in which we can bounce back to some semblance of normality. There have been a myriad of studies about resilience. Scholars have grappled with the question, what gives some people the ability to rise above difficult or even devastating situations while others are not able to do so? Where does that ability come from? Resilience studies have determined that certain factors are evident in managing traumatic life events and therefore may be beneficial in buffering the negative effects of these factors in the grieving or traumatic process. Resilience has been talked about and analyzed by many scholars. Some of the various definitions of resilience by these scholars include, and I have the, above us here, the first slide, definitions of resilience by several resilient scholars. They include the capacity of an individual, family or community to adapt after experiencing hardships and adverse life events. A stable trajectory of healthy functioning after a highly adverse event. Strengths forged through adversity to be viewed through a strengths-based perspective. And one author likened it to regulation in that the regulatory processes are activated in order to establish stability in the face of hardship. What all of these definitions have in common is that adversity is coupled with adaptation. Adversity, adaptation. Most contemporary definitions of resilience rely on the experience of adversity followed by the resulting positive adaptation. One author suggested that there is a universal characteristic in resilience, a form of resilience in which everyone to a greater or less extent possesses. The effects of resilience are to cope with, recover from and grow because of hard times. If this is true, then we all have the capacity for resilience. I would contend that everyone here has some resilience. Many of you have a lot. If that were not true, you would not be here. Most of you have experienced loss in your life. You have experienced trauma and you have come through it. Most of you are strong, capable and gifted. I know, I've met and talked with many of you. Most of you, in fact, probably almost all of you are aware of your strengths and you're aware of your resilience style. If you, if what you have been doing works for you and it causes no harm to anyone, then there is no real reason to change it. What I'm expressing here is not a recipe, but simply suggestions of things you can incorporate into your own experience that might add to what you're already doing. Now, several resilience theoretical frameworks have popped up based on these definitions and they continue to be used in resilient studies. Let me share with you some of these theories and help you understand the place and power of resilience in navigating and successfully recovering from difficult life experiences. The following is a very brief overview of a couple of these theoretical perspectives. Initially, resilience was viewed in terms of resilience traits or inner characteristics that empowered individuals, children and adults, to recover and refocus and adapt to hardships in order to function. Those individuals who enjoyed these resilience traits, aspects of your personality, things you possess, were able to adapt to traumatic events. Those who did not have these traits were not able to adapt. Resilience was defined from the individual trait perspective. Now, for those who did not possess these traits inherently, and this is key, it was possible to learn these traits. So if you did not possess trait resilience, the goal was to learn these specific traits and incorporate them into your own experience in order to be able to adapt to change or hardship when it happens. And the goal of the researcher was to determine exactly what these traits were and to teach them to those who did not possess them. A second approach or theoretical perspective regarding resilience has to do with thinking systemically. With the advent and popularity of systems theory, resilience came to be understood not just in individual terms, but also in terms of the family or community system. I believe that this theoretical perspective can be translated directly into the life of the community, especially a community as closely connected as well in the village. Drawing from this model or theoretical perspective, we can view resilience in the context of our community. I will refer to this as the Community Resilience Model. According to this model, there are ecological pressures which confront the community and resilience is created when the community interacts with these pressures. And these pressures have the capacity to make the community stronger. Unrelenting difficulties, catastrophic happenings and unsettling changes empower the community, making it stronger, more resourceful and better able to be fully competent in community life. The Community Resilience Model does not define resilience as an individual trait exclusively, but rather resilience is cultivated in relationships. There is strength in collaboration such that mutual support is key to conquering life's adversities. In this fourth slide, we show some key processes to this perspective. The first is shared belief systems, and I've included in the slide some things that pertain to that. The next slide shows group organizational processes and I have included some things that are contained in that, flexibility, connectedness and mobilization. And the next slide talks about communication, clarity, emotional expression and collaborative problem solving. Now, each of these processes work to strengthen the community and its capacity to withstand hardships and move successfully toward effective functioning. Now the question, how do we know if someone is at risk in the community of not having sufficient resilient skills in order to function or grow in the face of hardship? How do we know that someone around us may not have the skill to simply bounce back? Therapists and researchers have long worked with the notion of risk factors. Sometimes it is only possible to determine a person's potential for resilience by looking at the presence of risk factors or the absence of protective factors. Although the presence of risk factors do not always result in the lack of resilience, risk factors very often give a strong indication of a person's potential for resilience. If a person is struggling with hardships, it may be that there are risk factors present and the goal of the community would be to help remove the risk factors, which would then enhance the individual's ability to be resilient. Risk and protective factors, I've listed a few of these. Personality type plays a role in how we deal with isolation or quarantine. For example, and this is just an example, on the extrovert versus introvert continuum, logically speaking, those who lean more in the introvert direction will probably function better. That's by reason, I have no quantitative studies to verify this. Self-awareness, being aware of your strengths and limitations and being able to practice adequate self-care are always beneficial as well. The next slide shows some risk and protective factors that are out there and used by professionals all the time. Let me give you several risk factors or protective factors. Number one is an expression of faith or an awareness of the transcendence. This is not to suggest that the existence of a specific religion will keep you well, rather with regard to resilience, an expression of faith of any kind, and it doesn't really matter what it is, is advocated. And the form of faith differs, of course, by individual or family system. Secondly, a healthy and active support system is beneficial for being able to have resilience. Recent studies have shown that it is the quality of the support system that creates resilience, not simply having people around you. The people that are around you must be truly supportive in order to enhance resilience. Third, emotional strength as evidenced by strong coping skills. Coping skills include the ability to see an end to the trauma, plans for the future, sense of humor, strong self-esteem and self-worth. Coping skills. Fourth, previous loss or previous trauma. When I worked for hospice, we considered previous loss or multiple loss to be within the past five years. So if you've had a lot of trauma going on, that's a risk factor. Gender plays a role in this. How many of you knew gender had to do with resilience? According to recent studies, my study included women seem to handle trauma better than men. A risk factor then, over which we have no control, would be that you were male. I studied these various risk protective factors in the context of the trauma grief in order to see if they actually work and to determine which, if any, were better than others. I interviewed 150 people who had experienced significant recent loss. I utilized two different coping measures and one complicated grief measure. Using linear regression, we determined the results, which indicated that two of these protective factors were statistically significant. The two most important were emotional strength as evidenced through coping skills and gender. Now, with all of this in mind, and just to close, I would like to just throw some suggestions out here. Number one, acknowledge that generally speaking, life always moves towards healing. So therefore make conscious your own resilient strengths and observe resilient strengths in others. Secondly, enhance the protective factors, which means decreasing the risk factors that have been identified. Acknowledge your own spirituality, perfect your personal support system and create or enhance your own coping skills. And then finally, be aware of and utilize your own creative ability. Words are powerful and creative. Utilize words to create strength. Be intentionally strength-based as opposed to deficit-based relationally and continue to focus on the community. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this material. Thank you.
Come on up, Sandy. She's going to talk a bit about scams.
It's your favorite topic. I feel like a lot of times I'm repeating myself, but I think we have to hear it over and over because they keep coming up with new ways to get us. So just a reminder with scams, basically don't answer any emails or phone calls from people you don't know. And if they say that they're your credit card company or Medicare is a new one, don't answer them, but call the number on the back of your card. Or if you can't find a number, look it up on the internet for that company. So in short, just don't answer the emails or the phone calls and call them on your own. And then on a better topic, we are having an e-waste recycling event on Monday, the 28th. So if you have any smaller items, you can bring them down. They're going to be picking them up about noon, so bring them down before that and we'll put them in the usual place, which is behind the kitchen. That's just temporarily on that day, so they can pick it up there. And if you have anything bigger, let me know sometime the week before, so I can come around Monday morning and pick it up. All right. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, we've got some bistro menu changes coming up this spring, so some new items that you're going to see. Well, continuing with the burger, Southwest Buffalo Chicken Wrap, hot dog, French dip sandwich, personal pan pizza, chicken Caesar salad, deli board, barbecue pork sliders and chef salad. And of course, we've got the bistro salad. Ice cream flavor of the month for March is banana splits. Okay. And an update on dining. If you're inviting guests to dine with you at the designated guest tables outside the bistro and the two tables at the Grove, you may use your meal points to pay for your guests at the meal, a guest meal point rate. If you're making a reservation for the Vault or the Grove Dining Room for lunch or for dinner, it is considered a catered event, which would include food and service charges that will be added to your monthly bill. So you can inquire about the details with Kim. Wine lockers. Some of you have been leaving your wine lockers unlocked and we have, some residents have reported that they're missing some wine. So we are urging you to please lock up your wine locker moving forward. And if you can't find your key, please let Sandy know. Business center, the two, we have ordered two new computers to replace the existing computers in the business center and they have arrived. So IT will be here to install them. And also, the business center is maintained by administration, so please let us know if you have any concerns. Upcoming events, concert pianist Beth Sussman is here on Thursday, March 31st at 2:00 PM. We hope you've been enjoying the Lenten Suppers on Wednesdays. Suppers will continue through Wednesday, April 6th. No points, please call the Grove Hostess to make a reservation. April Town Hall meeting has been moved to Friday, April 22nd, and we will note that on the calendar. New residents, new resident Jade Smith, I don't see her in here, apartment 170, she moved in on March 9th. And Phil and Elsie Northern in 368 will physically be moving in on March 19th. They have technically been residents here for a few months, but they haven't physically moved yet, so you will be seeing them here on Saturday. Residents that passed away, Irene Patrick in 14B in Summer House passed away on March 5th and Dolores Cognac, apartment 174, passed away March 13th. Current occupancy, we have 139 accommodations in independent living with 177 residents, so we are at 89% occupancy currently. In Summer House, we have 14 accommodations with 19 residents and we are at 100% there for a total of 196 residents. We have two new move-ins in March and two new move-ins in April. Update on the executive director role, Randy, my boss, the divisional vice president, has interviewed a few candidates and so far he has not found a suitable match. I have some flexibility between now and the time my kids get out of school, so I'm going to stay a bit longer until June 3rd. Thank you. It is an honor to be here and I'm thrilled that I can stay longer. Any questions or concerns? Gloria?
I don't have a problem. I have a print on the screen. In most cases, this is okay, but most cases, very small, and I'm sure that many people have been unable to read it. This is the first time I've noticed.
Okay, thank you. We will look at past slides from past presentations and make adjustments. I think that the white font on the blue background might be hard to see now that I'm looking at it and maybe the... and maybe the font style, so we will adjust it for the next meeting. I also want to apologize, this week we sent out a letter and the font size was 12. And so we now know moving forward, we use size 14 fonts. It's better for our eyes, so you will see that moving forward. Thank you for the feedback.
One of the slides that talks about having guests, in the second bullet point, I didn't understand. Is there a way we could go back?
Sure, okay. So if you invite your guests to dine with you at the tables at The Grove or outside at the bistro, you can use your guest meal points for that. But if you're looking to have several guests and it's an event, like you would be using The Vault or another space like The Learning Center, it would be considered a catered event because we have to use additional staff to support and to serve. And so that gets into catering versus guest meal points.
Okay, but the limit is two people.
The limit in The Grove...
No, I'm sorry, it's a four-top table.
Right, in The Grove, the limit is a...
Right, so up there it says if you're making a reservation for The Vault or The Grove for lunch or dinner. It sounds like you have to, that it becomes a catering event even for a four-top.
Okay, and to clarify that, so if you, you can either use The Vault or you could use The Grove Dining Room for lunch. And that would be considered a catered event.
It says lunch or dinner.
Yeah.
So you may want to change that.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good day.